Good evening and welcome to the Xenia City Council Meeting for April 9th, 2015. Our regular session beginning at 7:00 PM will open this evening with the invocation by Chaplain Swiger. And following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Mayor. If you would please rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Let's pray together. "Our God, we come to you today and we thank you for your promise to us that ye will give us wisdom. And today, Lord, we just ask for special wisdom for our council as they lead our community. We thank you for this community, Lord, for those that have served in so many ways and are still serving, and just pray your blessing upon them. Thank you for your love and your mercy, and we just give you praise today."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain Swiger and Mayor. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowb.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
Now the motion, please, for approval of minutes from the March 26th, 2015 regular session, please. Who moves? Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on the minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowb.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now a special presentation by Megan Marholsky from the Ohio EPA, and we're going to be recognizing someone very special. Please come to the podium, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Megan Marholsky. I'm a geologist with the Ohio EPA in the Source Water Protection Program. This is Allison Reed. She is the lead geologist for the Source Water Protection Program with the Ohio EPA. And we're thankful today that you made time for us so that we can present a special certificate to the city to acknowledge what the city has done for source water protection and to also acknowledge one of the city's own Lisa Dawn for everything that she has done before she leaves and takes the new position. So what we'd like to do today is Allison will provide a little synopsis of what the city did in the early years with the Source Water Protection Program. We'll touch on some of the major achievements, why the city is getting this award today, and why this award is so special, and then we'd like to present it and hopefully get a quick picture for our website if that's okay. Okay. Allison, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, source water protection is really understanding where your drinking water comes from and what threats there are to your drinking water, and understanding how to protect it and actually implementing strategies to protect it. And Ohio EPA really started administering and encouraging this program in the early 90s, and Xenia really picked it up right as soon as we started, I think 1993 or 94. And we typically ask systems to delineate a source water protection area, to inventory all the potential contaminant sources in their protection area, and understand how sensitive these threats are to their drinking water. And then we kind of ask them to go above and beyond and develop a plan to protect the drinking water, and then it's great if you implement that. And I think we always, communities have to do the first part. We may get some to do the second part, and the third part really is where we struggle with getting communities to implement. And it's the most important part, is understanding and implementing strategies that protect your drinking water, that keep the water that you drink safe. And I think Xenia is a leading example. We were talking today about communities that really are proactive in doing this, and the strategies that Megan will touch on that you guys have implemented are a great example of that. And we actually, in order to encourage more communities to do this, we've actually started tracking, Ohio EPA is tracking what we call substantial implementation, so communities that are exceptionally implementing these strategies that they come up with. And we met with Lisa last week, right? Two weeks ago, and we just, we were, I mean, I was overwhelmed. I've been working in the Source Water Assessment Program since day one, since my time with the agency. And, you know, Xenia is one of the few communities that really, especially for your size, that the amount of resources that you dedicate to this program is really exceptional. And so we are now starting to recognize communities that go above and beyond, that are exceptional, that because we know how important it is, if you don't have your water resources, you don't have anything as a community. So to demonstrate exceptional implementation of these, we are now going to start recognizing communities. And Xenia is the first one in the state to be recognized. So I'm going to let Megan just hit on the high points of the, just for everybody's edification for what the city's actually doing, and we'll present the certificate.
So yes, as Allison said, this certificate actually came about because of our meeting with Lisa, and after our meeting, we called together all the source water protection people in the state and requested. And they were sort of, the head of Source Water Protection and Central Office was kind of thinking about going this way. We just gave her a little push. So we wanted to get this done before Lisa left. But before we present, like Allison said, we want to talk about some of the notable areas where the city of Xenia has been very innovative in their protective strategies and what they have done, and how other communities can really learn from the city of Xenia. There are three areas that I think the city of Xenia has excelled in, and that is why their program has been so successful, is so successful. Communication and relationships, land use, and early warning monitoring. Communication and building relationships, I feel, is one of the most important things for source water protection, especially because most source water protection areas are not going to be within the city's limits. For example, the city of Xenia, where are you getting your water from? The township. So what do you need to do? Build relationships with the township, the property owners, and that's what Xenia has done. And they do that through twice yearly protection committee meetings. Doc Ellis is here. He's been involved in, you know, as many meetings as I can remember. Property owner, business owner in the source water protection area. Mr. Lauterback, I can remember you coming to meetings. The city is getting people involved in the township, which is very important, because without the township's help, source water protection for the city of Xenia would be very hard to implement. The other thing is the city was getting, is getting central state professors and students involved in source water protection. So they're bringing outside resources to help. And of course, just again, the relationship with the township is just tremendous. And it's also the relationship with us. The city, Lisa, they come to us if they need help, which is, you know, what we want. We're here to help. And then also talking to our drinking water inspector, he couldn't be here tonight, but he has told us how he enjoys working with the city because it makes his job easier. So that's the kind of relationship the city has established with people. For land use, land use is very important for source water protection. A lot of times municipalities do not own the land in their source water protection area. If you don't have control of your land, it's hard to control the land use. But what the city has done is worked effectively with Xenia Township to manage the land use. How they've done that is they've requested the township to create zoning regulations to protect the source water protection area. They do twice yearly inspections of properties. That's Lisa and a representative from the township that do that. And that's very rare. There's not a lot of systems that do that. And the other thing that the city is doing more recently is purchasing land next to the well field to create green space, to get rid of potential sources that could be directly impacting groundwater. The last thing is early warning monitoring. Every source water protection area has different, is impacted by different potential sources. And in order to evaluate the effect that those potential sources have on your groundwater, early warning monitoring is a good idea. And that's basically when you collect groundwater samples from a monitoring well, you test those samples and find out if you have any chemicals of concern in your water. The city of Xenia has been doing early warning monitoring since at least 2003, and since that time, they've expanded their monitoring well network and continue to do so. They are also innovative in what they're analyzing their samples for. Within the last five years, the city has started to analyze for different parameters that can help them evaluate nitrate concentrations in groundwater and how it can affect how some production wells are more vulnerable to nitrate than others, which can be used in the future in how you're going to operate your production wells. So there are so many things that the city has done. We can't mention them all. Those are the biggest things. So what we hope is that for all the successes that the city has achieved, that the city continues to do what they're doing and to be innovative and to improve their protection program like they've been doing in the past. So for that, we thank you. And we would like to present the certificate of recognition to you. Thank you very much. You are standing. Thank you. Central state. Yes. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you so much.
Did you have a presentation to make to Lisa as well?
I'm sorry.
Did you have a presentation you were making to Lisa as well?
No.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming, and we are pleased to be recognized, obviously, by you. I know our city staff does an excellent job with this. I think a good majority of us on council have been involved in that aspect of it in some way, shape, or form. But it's good to know that our city staff is doing an outstanding job of protecting an imminently valuable resource here in southwest Ohio.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad that you recognized the importance of your research.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may too, just acknowledge the efforts of Lisa Dawn, who's been our water treatment plant supervisor for a number of years. Lisa's ushered in a lot of innovation, a lot of advanced maintenance techniques. She's really helped to advance the staff in terms of their capacity and depth of abilities. She has been instrumental in helping transition the plant from a very limited capacity to really being able to fulfill our capacity, even with some testing of the BFDs here recently that the council approved and we've installed. And Lisa just announced to us last week that she is accepting an opportunity down south to be closer to family. We're very thrilled for her, and at the same time, it's a double edged sword because we're sorry to see her go. We certainly wish her the best in her new endeavors, and again, Lisa's to be commended as a key player in the process of establishing this program for the city, and just want to give her a round of applause for what she's done.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and best wishes, Lisa. Enjoy. At this time, I think I'd like to, our pre-planning skipped that resolution till after audience comments, in all likelihood, and move to our public hearing, please, where we will seek to have a public hearing on an amendment to a Xenia particular chapter order, our fee schedule. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throughout the course of each year, city staff evaluates and prioritizes capital and operational needs within the context of available resources to fund them. This evaluation occurs through a variety of processes, including development of the city's budget, five-year capital improvement plan, financial projection analysis, and rate and fee models. Generally, operating expenses are fairly static with marginal increases, while capital needs fluctuate based on the condition of critical infrastructure, fleet, and other machinery and equipment. As a five-year capital program is developed, those expenses are run through the filter of financial projections and rate models to ensure that the plan can be funded. Financial projections suggest the city's general capital fund, improvement fund, and police and fire capital fund are capable of covering capital expenses listed in the current five-year CIP. It was approved by council on October 23rd, 2014. Improvements related to enterprise funds will require a rate increase to cover their capital items. Staff is recommending an increase of approximately 4% for water and approximately 3% for sewer in both 2015 and 16. For reference point, the 2015 water and sewer survey conducted by the city of Oakwood for jurisdictions in southwest Ohio found average water and sewer rate increases of about 4.08% and 2.63% respectively. Xenia's water and sewer rates remain extremely competitive in comparison to other communities throughout our region. As a result of the evaluation of other items in the fee schedule, the following changes are also being recommended. An increase of 1.4% for ambulance service use fees, so this is based on Medicare inflationary factors. Change in permits for tap fees, sidewalk curb and gutter construction and repair to $35 based on the cost of conducting inspections for these services. To remove outdated reference to audio cassette and VCR tapes, codify the street banner application fee, charge the actual cost for installation of irrigation meters, charge the actual cost for civil service eligibility tests.
Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing at this point and ask anyone who would like to speak for this particular ordinance amendment to please step to the microphone, provide us your name and address, and limit your comments two to three minutes, please. Seeing none, if anyone would care to speak against this particular ordinance amending, if you would please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments two to three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Tenny Smith, and I live at 905 East Main Street, Xenia, Ohio. And doing a community survey around Xenia, Ohio, where have the funds been for the street repairs and sidewalks? I see all these potholes. I'm not seeing any funds going into the community. I mean, I would like to see our roads repaired, and we're getting an increase. What has happened? We've had federal money, and we fixed up the area as you came, coming to Xenia. We put, cut down trees and put shrubs and everything. I mean, but our streets, you know, when I did one thing, I could say, there's nothing different in surveying the streets all over. There's potholes all over. It doesn't matter whether it's east end or what other part of Xenia, except for that one new addition, the streets look really well with really fancy street lights. And I mean, I was kind of disappointed in that when I kind of went and surveyed the area. Another thing I'm really disappointed about, and I've been a resident in Xenia for a very long time.
I hate to interrupt you. Are you talking about the fee schedule that's being proposed tonight?
The fee schedule?
Yeah.
As far as this increase in our taxes and stuff? Oh.
Just the fee schedule.
Oh, no. I thought this was an open meeting about what's in the community.
No, we were holding a public hearing, ma'am, where I assumed you were coming forward to speak against this particular fee schedule.
Oh, okay. No, I thought this meeting, because when I was calling about issues I had, I thought this was the meeting I was to come to tonight to voice.
You may, but that would be under our audience comments, and that will be in a few minutes.
Okay, sorry. Excuse me.
Would anyone care to come forward and speak regarding the public hearing, neither for nor against the fee structure proposed? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time and ask for an introduction of the ordinance, please.
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Smith. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
I unfortunately stood over one item in my agenda where I wrote in, in addition. Please, Mr. Superintendent, if you would come forward for a special presentation as well. I was getting out of order with myself.
It is definitely an honor and a privilege for me to be here this evening, so thank you so much for the invitation. I do have with me tonight Dr. Dillaplane, who is our Board of Education President, and I have Mr. Spar, a board member as well. Between the two of them, they have about 45 years' experience of service to the Xenia community and to the children of Xenia. And I have Christie Fielding, who is our Director of Business Services and Technology. It was about a year ago that we, the new board came together with the treasurer, with Christie, and myself as superintendent, and we kind of sat down and we said, we want to make sure that we have a roadmap. We have, we want to make sure we know where we're going. At that time, we said there were five things that were extremely important to us, for not only the students, but for all the residents in the city of Xenia. We said, first of all, we need to make sure that we're putting kids first. And what was happening for about the previous decade, we were losing between 75 and 100 students annually to our school district. We said, we need to make this change. So basically, we spent last summer talking to people, sending out mailings, knocking on doors, anybody that was, that lived in Xenia and had a child that was of school age and was not going or not attending Xenia schools, because we wanted them to understand what we had to offer. I'm very pleased and very proud to stand here tonight and say, instead of losing 75 to 100 students, as had been the tradition, we stand here today, 138 students more than we had a year ago at this time. And we, I left, we were doing kindergarten registration, and literally, we had standing room only people almost out the door. So we're very, very pleased, and we think that we're definitely going in the right direction. We wanted to make sure that we were, in addition to putting kids first, we wanted to make sure that we were being fiscally responsible. I think that is so important. And basically, what we did was, we went and tried to improve our bond rating. We sold municipal bonds on our new buildings, our five new elementary schools. This represented, when we sold these bonds, this represented about a $1.3 million savings. This is not $1.3 million that went to the school district, it went back into the taxpayers' pockets here in Xenia. Another thing that we did right off the bat, when we said, you know, we're going to make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned, we learned that we had a $237,000 state grant that we had returned to the state, and we said we didn't know how to spend the funds. So obviously, we said that was ridiculous. We got on the phone, literally, I was on my knees, and we did get the state to return the $237,000 to us, and we spent it for programs for our young people. We learned that we had not been filling out the paperwork for Medicaid funding for the last five years. That represents about $220,000 annually. So we got Diana Aliad and our Special Education Department together. We've completed the paperwork that needed to, and we've earned about, or received about $1.2 million for that. In addition, we learned that we did not have the correct Title I designation, which took away some of our flexibility. We've corrected that with the folks that we needed to. That now gives us additional opportunities. This last year, it saved us about $140,000, but that will definitely increase as each year goes on. Due to the hard work of the young lady next to me, Christie Fielding, operations-wise, because she keeps an eye on things, we saved about $1.4 million last year. So when you look at the one year that we've been together, our revenues exceeded our expenditures last year by $4.9 million. So we, you know, we know how hard everybody works. We know, of course, you know, et cetera, that there's a burden with taxes, so we're working as hard as we can to make sure that we're doing what people expect us to do. When we sat down again a year ago, we said the third thing we needed to do is we need to improve communication. Okay? We need to make sure that people understand what we're all about in Xenia Community Schools. We started off, and we did something that might seem like a little thing, but we took the audience participation part from the end of the board meetings, and we put them right up front at the beginning of the board meetings. That way, if the board is going to be taking action on some item, they haven't already taken action before the individual from the community has a chance to come and speak his or her piece. So we did that. We've been trying to be out in the community, meeting with groups, talking to people. We started a student roundtable, because I'm going to tell you something, we've got some great kids in Xenia. And so every other month, our Board of Education sits down with students from our middle school and our high school, and if you want honesty, let me tell you, those kids will tell you what they like about our school system and what they don't like about our school system. So we definitely have been very appreciative that we've been able to do that. One of the things that we cut is the district. We cut the In Touch magazine, and I'll be honest with you, I said, no, we're going to go the exact opposite. Obviously, you need to tell the things that's going on. The more people know about your school district, the better school district you'll have. So we've reinstituted our district newsletter. And finally, fortunately, because of this guy right here, Scott, has allowed me to be a guest columnist every week so we can share some of the good news that's happening in our school district. So I certainly appreciate that, Scott. The fourth thing that we said was, we need to make sure that we're giving teachers the resources that they need, and we need to have programs for young people that make them either want to stay in Xenia or come back to Xenia Community Schools. We started off with our Xenia Virtual Academy, and basically, this is a program for young people that are not being successful in the traditional setting. For some reason or another, they're just not being successful. So we started a program. These were students that, quite frankly, at the middle school and especially at the high school level, they didn't experience success, and they would drop out, sometimes go and get their GEDs, sometimes not. But right now, we have in this program 69 students participating in this program. This is 69 Xenia youngsters that are in school instead of walking the streets during the day. So we're very, very proud of that program. At the sixth grade level, we added an advanced math class. We also added a STEM science class called Automation and Robotics. So all sixth graders have the opportunity to take that, to take that class. In the seventh and eighth grade, we added a Design and Modeling STEM class, STEM being Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. We planned to add programs called Energy in the Environment, Flight in Space, Science of Technology, The Magic of Electrons, Green Architecture, and Medical Detectives, based after the program CSI, is maybe you like on TV. At the high school, we added some STEM classes called Engineering and Design, Principles of Engineering, and Principles of Biomedical Science. Down at our elementary schools, we reinstituted music in our elementary classrooms. You know, obviously, what do we hear about? What do you see on the front page of the newspaper? You see the test results. But you know what? We're about much more than that. We want to make sure we're working with the entire youngster. And so therefore, we reinstituted music in elementary. We now have an elementary choir that has over 100 students in that program, so it's phenomenal. We started a digital learning class in our elementary schools, so they have those skills. We added guidance counselors, and the board has had the foresight to say, we need to set money aside for textbooks and technology. So for the first time, we now have money set aside for those programs. And then the fifth thing that we said that we needed to do quite candidly was, we want Xenia Community Schools to be the heart of the community, but we need everybody to know that we're all working together. And I've got to take my hat off to each and every one of you. Because if you don't know it, about every other month, the Board of Education and the city council sits down, and we have a joint meeting sharing areas where we can work together. And the process is working. We've started a city-school-kids-in-poverty task force. The purpose of this task force is to make sure that no child in Xenia goes home hungry. All right? So I certainly want to congratulate each and every one of you, all right, for your participation in that, and we look forward to that continuing. Very briefly, I want to say, 82% of our graduates from last year, 82% of our graduates are right now enrolled in college. Nationwide, that number is 68%. So we're at 82% right here in Xenia. A year ago, 59%. 59% of our revenues were being spent on what's going on inside the classroom, on classroom instruction. Right now, 71%. So we've increased 12% in one year. Talk about putting your money where your mouth is. That's exactly what we're doing, saying, what is important to us, and it's classroom instruction. At the same time, our overall progress score on the report card went from a C a year ago to an A right now. So we've got hardworking, dedicated folks that are doing a phenomenal job. What does it mean when I say progress has gone from a C to an A? What that means in a nutshell is that the average student, every student in Xenia schools on the average showed two years of academic growth in one school year last year. So I'm not just talking the academically gifted child, I'm talking about every child. The average was two years of growth in one year's time. I'm so proud to be associated with Xenia Community Schools. I kid you not, I have the best job in town, because I get to go and talk about the good things that are happening, quite candidly, that other people are doing. You know, you already heard me talk about our board members, and Christie, who's going to say a few words in just a moment. I'm surrounded by one- I'm surrounded by, by wonderful people. Just a few weeks ago, we had the Executive Director of the Ohio School Facilities Commission come to Xenia. Why did this person come to Xenia? Because it was sent by, all right, the Governor of the State of Ohio. Why? Because they wanted to see a successful Ohio School Facilities project. Of all the school districts in the state of Ohio that have had programs that have been going on, where buildings have been built, they came to Xenia. Why? Because we built five elementary schools in nineteen months, they were finished ahead of schedule, and they came in under budget. All right, you talk about phenomenal. Did I have anything to do with that? I didn't have a doggone thing to do with that. But this young lady and our Board of Education certainly did, which is why, like I said, I'm blessed, all right, to get to do what I do. All right, also, I can tell you that, um, we just, uh, we're, we're talking right now, every month, either to a, to a different Board of Realtors. Sometimes, we're talking with Xenia Realtors, sometimes, we're talking with the Dayton Board of Realtors. We are out and about. Why? Because, doggone it, Xenia is the best-kept secret in the Miami Valley. And what we have to offer, we want people coming in, to, uh, Xenia, Ohio. And as I said, our enrollment is up, one hundred and thirty-eight students this year, all right, and I guarantee you, it is gonna continue, all right, to go up. I'm just so pleased. I'm here tonight to seek your support. We want to continue some of these programs that I've just talked about. On the ballot on May fifth, you're gonna see two renewal levies. And I wanna stress, renewal levies. Zero increase in taxes. The first one is going to be Issue Three. It is a property tax. It was first passed in two thousand and four. It is Issue Three, it is a property tax, first passed in two thousand and four. The district will not collect any more next year than they are this year, than they did last year, than it did the year before. Zero increase in taxes. The second renewal levy that you're gonna see is Issue Four. This is a half-percent income tax that was first passed in nineteen ninety-seven. Okay, so what we're saying is, we have a property tax that was passed in nineteen ninety-seven, excuse me, uh, uh, income tax passed in nineteen ninety-seven, a property tax from two thousand and four. It rep, these two renewal levies represent twenty-four percent of our total operating budget. All right, so therefore, they're extremely important, and if they're, if we're not successful, we will be in deficit spending by two thousand and seventeen. All right, so obviously, we're, we're seeking your support, all right, for this endeavor. I'm gonna turn it over just for, right now, uh, to Christie Fielding, because obviously, I'm getting to stand here and talk about some of the things that we're doing, and it's so exciting, and that I've got a chance to talk about the two renewal levies. But the one thing that I know everywhere I go, people are wanting to talk to me about, uh, is the new turf project, and what this is going to do, not just for Xenia Schools, but what it's gonna do for the entire Xenia community. So Christie?
I brought some drawings, um, of the proposed turf project and, and what it's gonna look like, and I also brought some extra, if anybody in the audience would like one. Um, like Denny said, I have been very fortunate to have worked on some really neat projects since I came to Xenia, with one being the five new elementary buildings. Um, what a great, uh, source of pride in our community, those buildings have been, and they continue to be a source of pride because of the way we're maintaining them. Um, and so now, we're looking at this turf project, which I fully anticipate is going to be the next source of pride for this community. A little over a year ago, we did a master planning, um, project for the stadium, and we had a group of people sit down and say, okay, put, put on your thinking caps and create a plan, whatever that plan looks like, let's put it, you know, put it together. And we did that, and one of the first things that we said was a priority out of that plan, though, was new turf. That had to be the start of the project. So it's been a while. And, um, so finally, we did have a donor to step forward, and, um, the Doug Adams Trust was gracious enough to, um, provide us with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to start this project off. Um, the school district had a contract with Miami Valley, and that project, um, we had two-hundred thousand dollars sitting aside, knowing that we wanted to do a project like this in the future, and we were just waiting for some, you know, a good donor to come along to help us get started. So we put that two-hundred thousand, so that gave us four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to start with. We anticipated the project was gonna cost us approximately six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So on January twenty-eighth, we had a, um, dinner, and we invited many, um, potential donors in the community to come to that dinner, and we started what we were calling the Five-K Buck Club. We were asking each donor to provide five thousand dollars over one, two, or five years. And so our goal was, we were gonna get a bunch of donors at five thousand dollars. We set a goal that we had to have this done in one month's time, and if we didn't get it done in a month's time, we were gonna turn the money back to the, the donors who committed, and we were going to put the project on the back burner for a while. And why? Because we have a levy coming up, and we did not want that to interfere with the levy campaign. And, um, with that being said, we committed on this project that not a single dollar from taxpayer money would go towards this project. Every single dollar had to be raised by fundraising, or we would not do the project. And we felt that was necessary, especially with us asking to renew the two levies. So during that dinner, we got many donors, um, and, and after that dinner, in one month, we raised over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Um, sitting here, some of you donated, very thankful for that. Um, so in addition to the Doug Adams Trust, the, uh, Miami Valley Funds, we had the We Bucks Organization, John, um, step forward, and they donated fifty-five thousand dollars, so we put them in our Fifty-K Buck Club. Um, then Club X, which is our local soccer organization, they came forward, and they donated twenty thousand dollars to the project. And so they became the Twenty-K Buck Club. So we're, we kinda created some extra buck clubs. Um, so in total, since that dinner on January twenty-eighth, we now have seven-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for this project. So the project is fully funded. On, um, at our March, um, board meeting, we approved the contract for the Moats Group to, um, do the project. The project, um, we were having a groundbreaking this coming Monday, so you're all welcome to come, please attend. Um, it'll start at five o'clock, it'll be at the stadium, um, we'll, we'll have shovels out there, very similar to what we did for the groundbreaking for our elementary buildings, and, um, we will start breaking ground, literally, right after that. And so we will have this project done by July fifteenth, and it will be ready for our teams to compete on this year, and for our band to, um, potentially have some tournaments on. And, you know, we just think that this project is more than a project for the, for our school district, I mean, yes, we have less, we won't have to maintain it, and water it, and line it, and mow it, and, and all of those things, but, you know, our teams can have competitions out there, not have to worry about, you know, is it raining tonight? We're still having a competition. Um, we're not gonna have to worry about it being flooded, any of that. Um, you know, we can start to have some tournament games out there. So we find this to be a, uh, you know, the city can start using it maybe for some economic development, we're gonna have people coming in for all these events, you know, maybe hotels and restaurants, and so I think this can be a real great starting point for some, for excitement for building that area as well. And so we hope to be able to work with the city, um, for some projects like that, and, and we hope that that's the result, that we get to bring lots of people in and use the turf. So we are extremely excited, and we hope that it continues to be a source of pride for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Do you have any closing comments?
Do I have any closing comments? Not really, other than thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. Again, at five o'clock on Monday night, all right, at the, uh, at the Veterans Field, we will be having the groundbreaking, you're certainly all welcome. And, and I'll be honest with you, I, I, I just have to say in closing, how blessed I feel that we are working so well together to do what's best for the citizens of this community. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you bring posters?
I'm sorry?
Do you bring posters for us?
I, I, how, it's, it's the same thing, yes.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we also have, uh, in front of us, delivered this evening, an emergency resolution. Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you speak to that for just a moment, please?
Emergency resolution would, uh, provide an opportunity for council to support, um, the, uh, the measure that the school district, or measures that the school district are undertaking, and so, uh, it would be appropriate. Um, I would certainly endorse and recommend the measure. Um, I would just add that there are a lot of things that we can do as a community to try to create an environment locally that's conducive to investment and job creation. I can think of none better than a strong school district.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please, as an emergency, to pass this resolution before us this evening?
So move, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Mr. Vice President?
Just one, um, just a couple. I'm really excited about a few things in our school system. I spend a lot of time with my kids in the school. Um, the technology in the classroom has, has come a long way. Um, to, to be able to go to my daughter's school and see them use iPads and things in the classroom, um, is, is, is a blessing that many schools don't have. Same thing with our STEM programs, we, we, uh, my son absolutely loves the STEM classes, and I was shocked when he come to me and asked me to download a program for free that I have degreed engineers using every day in school, and he was, uh, teaching me a few things in it. And I can't say enough about the leadership from, from the, from the staff, um, the directors and the, and Denny, and the, and the board, and the new board members, and even the old ones in the back. About the, how just the perception of the school system has changed so much in a very short period of time, that we should be very proud of.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you very much. Um, I'd just like to speak to the turf project. I had the, uh, the opportunity to work with the Superintendent and Christie Fielding there, uh, on that project, and, uh, they truly had, do want a partnership with the local organizations, whether it be Club X, We Bucks, whoever. And, uh, through that partnership, uh, every youth football player in the city of Xenia now is going to have an opportunity to play on that field also. And, you know, five years ago, I don't believe anyone in this city would've said that would've ever happened. So, uh, anyone that registers to play youth football this year, uh, they will be playing on the same field the high school students play on. So I know there's a lot of kids excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
I would just like to commend Mr. Morrison. We hit it off right away, because I'm not a tax-and-spender, he's not a tax-and-spender, he's fiscally conservative. And what I like about this project, and maybe we could take lessons from it, all this money was spent without taxpayer dollars. And you've implemented so many things in your short term that save the taxpayers' money, which is tru, true, true to my heart. So again, I wanna commend you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Councilwoman?
Well, when we first moved to the community, my children weren't in school yet, and so we were searching, and we were very concerned. We came from a very small rural community, and for us, this was like moving to New York City. And in that terms, we were very concerned, but we looked at the school system, and a lot of the school system is how much the parents participate, but also, as leaders of the community, it's our responsibility to help those who can't help their own children. And that is something that I saw that was very promising then, and it has blossomed and become something so great. And so many times, when Xenia gets a knock from other communities, they only pick out the one or the two, they don't pick out the thirty, or the forty, the fifty that are successful. And it is so great to be able to say that, and to be able to present that to them now. And, um, you guys have done a wonderful job, the school board, Christie, Mr. Morrison, I mean, I'm, I'm so blessed to have my children, my son's graduating this year, and the twelve years with him here has been great. And I also have one question about this field, I love it, but as I am looking at the logo and looking at the directions of the north, south, east, and west, did it get flipped that the home side's gonna be on the other side now? No? Oh, 'cause that, we were looking at that, and kind of where the north and the arrow is at the conceptual field planning. So we were just wondering about that.
It is currently facing the, the current home side on the drawing. Um, however, that was, I'm sorry.
It is currently facing the home side on the drawing. Um, that was part of the master planning phase and discussions, that we would like to eventually have the money to put new home bleachers on the side that it's supposed to be on. Um, at which time, we, you know, we, that's gonna be expensive, rough figures, they're a little over a million dollars for a new set of bleachers and a press box. Um, so at that point in time, we have designed the field, so that if we get that money, we'll need to calculate into the fact that we will need to flip that logo. And so what they will be able to do is that we've made it size-wise enough so that they can cut it a square around it and literally just rotate it. So when we get those new bleachers, we can just flip it around. But we're gonna work on a track next, so.
Wonderful. You know, that's the whole thing, you gotta have your plans, your, your capital improvement, and, and go towards your goals, so, very good job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor, please.
Yeah, I do wanna commend, uh, Superintendent Morrison for the job that he's done, and he's a positive image, it's all, always out there. And I commend the board as well, and it just goes with the, um, how when you work together, you have a very cohesive board, a very positive board, and I think that that positiveness has, uh, transferred itself into the community, and people see that you're working together to make these improvements. So I really commend the board, and you as well, and Christie as well, who's always out there doing the work behind the scenes, so, uh...
That's right.
Yeah, and so, so I will always support the school system, you, they're very, school system's very dear to my heart, so thank you for your work that you've done.
Any other comments, please? I would also add my congratulations to, uh, you and, uh, your staff and board for all that you've accomplished, and certainly, I believe you'll find in just a moment, that you have the unanimous support of this council and this city administration, uh, supporting your, uh, resolutions and, and levies going forward. Uh, the one thing that I would, uh, comment on in regards to your excellent presentation, uh, being a degreed engineer myself, I am, I am very pleased to see all those, those things, uh, being added. Uh, the one thing I, I would love to hear more about from you is how we are getting there from here. Uh, a, as you know, my wife is a librarian, she's always interested in early childhood literacy, and that's one thing that I see in, in the schools and such, that, uh, a great deal of emphasis is needed in early childhood literacy, because to be able to literally succeed in today's world, to succeed in these courses that you're setting up, uh, early childhood literacy is absolutely critical, uh, because without the ability to effectively communicate, uh, your ability to learn is almost, almost nil. So I would love to talk to you sometime later about that, because I think, uh, that's a, a continuing growth and need in the, the community.
I would welcome that opportunity, and, and not only my door, but Christie's door, our board member's door, they're always open.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Any other comments, please? Seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, all of you.
At this time, we have an opportunity, ma'am, for audience comments. Uh, should anyone wish to come forward and speak to the, uh, Xenia City Council on a particular topic, uh, please feel free to do so, provide us your name and address before , uh, beginning your comments.
My name is Denny Smith. I live at nine oh five East Main Street, Xenia, Ohio. I do appreciate the work that they're doing in Xenia City Schools, because both of my, I have two boys, and there's fifteen years difference. I taught them how to write their ABCs when they're two, and then when they went into school system, they were bored, so I appreciate the extra programs that they have implemented. But my concern has been, um, I, I was kinda talking about the potholes and stuff of the city, I would like to see that addressed. And I also, um, concerned, my personal concern is my property. Um, you know, the city had a taken, dig up a lot of sewer lines, and they, um, had to go on my property. I owned a lot next to my house, and, you know, they did put gravel down, they promised me that they would restore my property to the way it was. And so, and I had to wait till the weather break for them to address it, so I contacted the code enforcement officer, and I was instructed that, um, this is all that they were gonna do for my property. Now, I live in the east main of Xenia, I brought my house with my GI Bill, and, uh, we done built double of my property, and I just want, I'm not asking for the city to do more than what they promised me, that they're gonna restore my property to the way it was. And so I wanna, you know, I pay double taxes, 'cause I work outside the city of Xenia. Like I said, I never had expected a handout. I just want my driveway restored, and those big tire tracks, and I'm told the only thing that's going to be done is hay put on my yard. You know, I still got homes mud ho. I'm not a Susie homemaker, and I don't like all that mud being trampled in my house all the time from the driveway that's messed up. And, I mean, I have a lot of respect for Xenia. I mean, I chose Xenia because I didn't want to live in a city environment. But I do expect the city to do what they promised, to restore my property. I mean, I own it. And I purchased it when I was a single parent. And we, since I got married, we built double. And inside my house is beautiful. And I don't need work on outside, but inside is beautiful, and I want my property restored.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, would you look into that with public service, please? Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, let us move to reports of committees, please. Councilwoman Mills, Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities.
Thank you. We had our meeting on April the 7th, and we were very excited to be able to share all the great things that's going on in our community. At this time, when we look at our sheet of items, these, and I'm just not going to read them all, but this is what BRACCA does. And so, if you are able to see the long list all filled out, there's movies, there is music, there is fishing derbies, Easter egg hunts, Christmas programming, many, many things that BRACCA does. And I want to add, BRACCA is all volunteers on this board. So, I want to, you know, applaud all of those members who are on the BRACCA board. Two of the things that I wanted to bring up as coming up soon is Bloom with Xenia, Adopt a Spot, and the Volunteer Day. Bloom with Xenia was developed when we were having issues of how we were going to fill all the spots in the downtown area. And so, BRACCA came up with this plan of if you would like to adopt a spot. So, if you are interested in adopting a spot, we invite you to grab one of these packets. They're on our city website page, or you can come to downtown and get a printed-out copy of them. But you can adopt a spot, plant the flowers, we provide the mulch, and we just ask you to keep it weeded and looking nice. And it's a wonderful opportunity that you can teach your children how to garden and to be able to have pride in your community. So, if you're interested, this is one way, and this is something I wanted to bring up. And bringing up this also comes along with Volunteer Day. That is going to be Saturday, May 16th. And we ask any kind of volunteers that would come, if you are with a group of people, individuals that need service hours, you let us know, and we will write a letter that, with the letterhead from the city of the service hours that you gave. And that way, you can help with gaining service hours for different things. And again, that is Saturday, May 16th. We meet outside at City Hall at 9:00. Mulch is available, and we just lay out mulch and just make the city look beautiful before we start out with our First Fridays and things of that nature. We try to get the town looking the best that we can. The other item that I wanted to bring up that is going on right now is our community garden spots. If you are interested in having a garden spot, it is out on Tower Road. The city tilts it and discs it, and then after that, it's up to you to maintain it and plant. But we also have water available there now, so if you bring out your hose, you can water your garden and stuff like that. And if you are interested, we would like you to call Lisa at the Public Service Center, and the number is 376-7265. And you can get all the information that you need there, and when they'll have everything completely ready. And we have been talking about, there's going to be seven oak trees, a donation at Porshani Park and the bike trail. We're looking at the Christmas and the rail and trail bikes, and a lot of great things that we're looking into. The annual Easter egg hunt was just this past week. We had at least 1,500 people in attendance. The pavilion was full, and people were actually standing out on the sidewalk, out from underneath it. And we had 50 baskets that were donated, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to just come and join in with your community. So, our next event is Arbor Day, and that's April the 24th. It's going to be on a Friday, and it's going to be with Cox School, and they're going to teach the children how to plant a tree, and they're having the children of Cox to do that. So, this is something that is a little bit different, but they're also doing hand-on individual items with the children. And then, First Fridays, BRACCA will have the booth, and we'll have a flyer with everything going on that's free at the park. So, come down on May 1st, First Fridays, and grab a flyer from us.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills and Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities, please?
I do, Mr. President. I'd like to personally thank Councilwoman Mills. She's had a busy weekend. After the egg hunt, just truly successful. It was very cold. I'd like to thank the mayor, Councilman Engel, and Councilwoman Mills. We were there, and it was really chilly, but it was a great day. And I'd also like to thank publicly Sarah Mays.
Yes.
Who is involved with Xenia Area Association of Churches. That's a joint effort with the city and BRACCA. And it's just a phenomenal event to see hundreds of kids leaving with baskets full of eggs. And there was some organizations, I think Great Clips in Xenia, and Greenwood Manor donated additional eggs. So, we'd like to thank them publicly. And then, also, I mean, Councilwoman Mills is very busy. I know Tuesday, we had a two-hour executive meeting from 4:00 to 6:00, and then she had her BRACCA meeting right after that. So, just a lot of time involved in that. And BRACCA is just a great organization. I had the privilege to chair that several years ago, and that is a wonderful organization we have here. So, thank you.
And thanks to you, Councilman. You were also an integral part of that activity for the community, and it was very, very, very successful.
Lots of smiling faces, even with the cold weather.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Councilwoman Mills, please? Seeing none, Councilman Smith, please. Traffic Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. Xenia City Traffic Commission did not meet in the month of April due to a lack of agenda items. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 4th.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic, please? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
The Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet. We had no agenda items as well.
Thank you. Anything for the mayor and VZA, please? Seeing none, items from City Council and mayor, anything from my colleagues to bring forth for the good of the order this evening? Councilman?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to make a motion that audience comments be extended to five minutes maximum. It seems like we've been inconsistent. Some weeks it's two minutes, some weeks it's three minutes, some weeks it's four minutes. I think that citizens have a right to speak to this council for at least five minutes. You know, our constitution says "we the people," not "we the council." So, if a citizen comes here, I think that they need to be given the right to speak for five minutes. Thank you.
I have a motion, please. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion and second, please? Mr. Vice President?
I will hardly agree with the statement that, and I've talked off the record with council, with the president, about making sure we're consistent with our time that we give to our audience members. I will be able to know on this just because the min and max thing, maximum five minutes, six minutes, whatever, I still believe that that is respectful to the agenda of the day, how many people we have speaking get through that time, and is a, I guess, lack for a better word, a privilege of the council president to set the rules of the meeting. So, I'm just going to respectfully ask my colleague to be mindful of the time, which I think he has been, to give them the maximum time possible. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. For my seven years on council, there's been a sign on the front of that podium that states "five minutes." I believe if a citizen takes the time out of their busy schedules, takes the time out of their day, I don't think it should matter how big our agenda is, how small our agenda is. If they take the time to come here, we should be able to give them at least five minutes. Just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe every January, we elect a president of council, and it's that president's decision when we have a meeting due to the size of the audience comments to judge how much time should be given to those that speak. And we've had people actually address our council that are not even citizens or voters here in the city, and we've allowed them the opportunity to speak. But it's not censorship, it's just keeping things moving and politeness of everyone's time. So, I would agree with Councilman Long, and I would not be accepting this change at this time.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I do agree with Councilman Long that it is important that everyone has the right to speak, but also, as being a prior president, and also being on the board the longest, we have always adjusted our minutes accordingly to the size of the audience, not our agenda. The size of the audience, when we have people standing in the halls, when we had some of our ordinance and things of that nature, we would have been here for three hours just going through audience comments. And I think that that is not a fair way to do either to all the people either. So, I will be voting no on that. But I do agree with Councilman Long that if the audience is within a, inside this room, then I would like it to be the three to five if at all possible.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, please? Mayor?
I agree as well. I think we're very respectful to those who come to the podium, and I've not heard anybody just really complain about the time that they had. So, I'm fine with what we currently have.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, please? Councilman?
Well, you know, the people took me in this seat, and I don't take that very lightly. Councilwoman Mills, I'll stay here six hours if that's what it takes. That's what I was elected to do for the people. So, I don't know how anybody can put a limit on the citizens. It's "we the people," not "we the council." This council is shutting down the public's comments. You're eliminating the amount of freedom of speech. Freedom of speech means a lot to me. And it's pretty obvious the way this has gone, but I'll be here all night if people want me to be.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
No.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
No.
Councilwoman Mills.
No.
Mayor Bayless.
No.
President Engel.
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Anything else from the council, please, for the good of the order? Mr. President?
Yes. I'd like to make a positive comment. I had a situation at home where I had to call animal control for the city, and that gentleman, I did not tell him my name, I just gave him my address, extremely polite, very prompt to take care of that situation, and took care of it that day. So, I'd just like to thank him, and I don't know how else he does in the community, but he appreciated taking care of that situation.
Anything else, please? Councilman?
Last meeting, I asked for a couple of items from City Manager. And for the record, I wanted to let the public know, external legal counsel, last year, we As far as architecture, we have spent $397,994.65. For the record, I would like the public to know exactly what this council is doing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Biden, this evening. First is a request for emergency regulations to authorize a then-and-now payment to interstate forwarding amount of $3,910.88 for transmission replacement. As described in your agenda reports, unit number 1915 is an essential frontline vehicle for our street maintenance division. Mechanical failure occurred to the vehicle at a critical operational point. Work to replace the transmission was initiated immediately in order to return the unit to operations as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, due to the timing of the repair work when it was started, it was just prior to a weekend, the purchase order was not placed in time before the repair work was done, which we asked to be expedited. Staff is therefore requesting action. Staff is therefore requesting action as an emergency so the bill can be paid promptly.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency for the payment in the then-and-now?
Send.
Moved by the Vice President, seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is requesting an emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase of properties at 1847 U.S. Route 68 North in a total amount of $74,699.84, and at 1849 U.S. Route 68 North in a total amount of $77,649.56. And the authority to execute the purchase documents for both, the city had applied for and is receiving pre-disaster mitigation grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to execute these purchases and want residential relocation involved. Staff is requesting the action as an emergency as a result of the extended time required to negotiate the final sale of the land and the looming grant implementation deadline, which is in August, by which all work on the project, including the demolition and remediation of the properties, must be complete.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency to permit this action? It's moved by Councilman Smith, seconded, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Mr. Vice President?
This is directly related to the recognition of the city God this morning by protecting their ground where these properties sit, and that, what do you call it, the ground source water?
Source water protection area.
That's the right term. Right there, and to help us protect and secure our facility there in township. Thank you.
Correct. I just want to reiterate that, you know, there's some asbestos remediation that we have to go through, we have to demolition, or demo the properties, and all these tasks have to be completed by the grand deadline, which is why we're requesting the emergency action. And it took a lot longer to negotiate the final sale of the property than we had anticipated.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, staff presents recommendations of various administrative actions in an award of bid related to the city facilities development project. As thoroughly detailed in your agenda reports, these actions are to, one, adopt an emergency ordinance amending Xenia Codified Ordinance as Chapter 236 to establish a bond payment fund, Fund 472, and a bond construction fund, Fund 365. Second, to adopt also an emergency ordinance appropriating funds to cover the construction cost and debt service payments affiliated with the construction of the new city administration facility and renovation of the city hall in fiscal year 2015, commencing in fiscal year 2015. Third, to waive the informality contained in the bid, award the bid, and authorize execution of the contract with Venture One Construction of Cincinnati, Ohio. The construction of the city hall administration building and renovation of the city hall at a cost not to exceed $6,748,937. These steps are the final actions required to advance the city's facilities plans and to engage the projects necessary to bring about the long-term solutions for the facility needs we've discussed. Council has previously executed the bond ordinance, and subsequently, the bonds have been issued, and proceeds of their sales have been received by the city. These steps will authorize the engagement of those funds to initiate the project as planned, and certainly, the finance director, the city engineer, and I are available for any questions on all these various actions.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency for the various actions associated with the construction of our new city administration building and renovation of the existing city hall? It's a moment. Moved by the Vice President, seconded, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. If Mr. Berger could step to the podium, please? At the last meeting, we talked about the roads and reconstruction of some of our city streets, and I asked the question why some of our worst roads in the city were not being completed? And, you know, I was going to tie it into this last meeting, and this got pulled from the agenda. So if you could, could you remind the public why? Because we continually get the question, why the worst roads in the city are not being completed?
Okay. Sure, no problem. Worst roads in the city, by definition, is subjective. As I said at the last meeting, for the folks that didn't see it, you know, the streets that we are doing are also bad. They're terrible, just as much as the ones that, you know, the ones that weren't included that the folks that you all hear say, hey, my street's worse than the street you are doing. So recognize, you're always going to have that. I've been doing street programs long enough that it's not unique to this community, it's everywhere. Secondly, when we select a street, it's not just about who, you know, the asphalt condition. We also look at the water and sewer condition that's underneath the street. Doesn't make a lot of sense if we've had a history of water main breaks or sewer backed ups to pave, to spend the money to pave a street and then have to, you know, go, you know, a water main break comes during the winter time, you know, within six months. So, you know, we want to deal with those issues before we put money into paving. Thirdly, we also look, you know, as directed by council, which, as I said before, staff wholeheartedly endorses the process of selecting streets throughout the city so that you're not showing favoritism to the east end or the north end or south end. So, and I've presented, I have maps that show which streets we did on, you know, just by visual, you know, one color shows what we did in eleven, twelve, thirteen, and you can get a visual that it's throughout, it's citywide, it's not just one center on one location. So there are several, there are several items at play here, variables, and we are addressing, as a matter of fact, we are, we have been on the sewer side of things. You know, we've been taking our I and I study that was completed back in two thousand and nine, we've been lining a lot of sewers, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, last year lining sewers so that those streets that are, you know, over top of those sewers can be paved. In addition, we started just this year, we got money in our capital improvement budget for, on the water side of things, to replace water mains that are on some of those bad streets. And as a matter of fact, you know, after our last meeting here, I put that high on my radar screen for my folks, they've already been out surveying and working on a couple of streets right now. So that is in process as we speak.
So, bottom line is, the ones, some of the ones that are the worst in the city are not getting done because water and sewer lines need replaced under the street, catch basins need repaired, gutters need, sewers need, or curbing needs repaired, et cetera.
Yes.
Checking with the city manager or city Finance Director, thirty-six percent of this new construction is going to be water and sewer funds. So thirty-six percent of eleven point nine million dollars of your taxpayer dollars are going to be spent on renovation of this building and building a new city building. The city engineer did some study for me way back a couple of years ago on security essential buildings. That's our true need, our true need is a police station. Many, many buildings, I believe there were over twenty on the list. When he sent me the list, the average cost per square foot was a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per square foot for a security essentials building. I believe the building in Beaver Creek, the fire station with the sheriff's substation, was around a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a square foot, I believe. Our new city administrative building, and I confirmed these numbers earlier this week with the city engineer, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents per square foot. That's what we're going to pay for this new city building. Seventy-eight dollars and forty-three cents a square foot to renovate this building. I have no doubt this building needs renovated for a police station if we move out. I have serious concerns, I mean, we supposedly mitigated all the asbestos in this building, but you start doing demolition and tearing out walls and stuff, God only knows what we're going to find in this building, and that number may increase. So I haven't been in support of this building from day one, I was in support of new construction of a police station, I'm still not in support of this. The bonds have been sold, it's a done deal, your taxpayer dollars are going to be spent on this project, but I want the public to be fully aware, the reason we're building an administrative building is so we can use thirty-six percent of our water sewer funds towards that building. If it's strictly a police station, we cannot use thirty-six percent of our water and sewer That's the bottom line. Still not in favor of it. We had a public hearing tonight on water sewer increase, on your fees, it's not only going to affect the city residents, it's going to affect the township residents more than it's going to affect the city residents. So those of you that watch city council meetings that live in the township, you'll get an increase also to help us pay for our new administrative building. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments, please? Councilman.
I like Councilman Cowb, I've been against this project from day one. I had a little bit different solution for the problem than he did, but, you know, use this present building for this city hall. We've got, I don't know how many empty buildings downtown Xenia that a police station could be utilized in one of our many empty buildings. You know, it's been said, when we get this new city hall, it's going to attract people. If I was a CEO of a company and I came to the city and I saw our new city hall, and I started driving around the city and saw all these empty buildings, that would be a definite red flag. And as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Morrison, a fiscally responsible person, I'm in his camp that taxpayers don't want to shell out twelve million dollars for this new city hall. And it's just, to me, again, every opportunity I get to speak about it, I speak about it because they, it's public information that we have four years of negative cash flow. Now, if you was a CEO of a company and you had four years, looking four years of a negative cash flow, would you invest twelve million dollars into a new city hall? I don't think so, not if you're fiscally responsible. And there's so many other things tied to this, that your water and sewer rates are going to go up, which I'll be voting against. An eight hundred thousand dollar streetlight assessment to balance our budget, which we can't balance, I'll be voting against. I think the taxpayers in this city are up to their eyeballs in taxes, and it's about time somebody stepped to the plate and did something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, please? Councilman.
I'll comment, I'm just wondering if there's a correlation between the increase in students at Xenia Community Schools with the five new elementary schools that they enhanced our community with. You know, progress costs money, folks, and, you know, it's the same old argument at every meeting, I'm glad tonight we're putting this past us. The original plan to move the Xenia Police Department to Simon Kettin was scratched. We can't just build a new police department because we don't set up the rules, the government does, there's only certain funds we can pay for this with. And in two thousand and thirteen, the city requested proposals from local building owners and developers to submit ideas for alternative locations, all which were not acceptable. In addition to occupying Simon Kettin Elementary, the city investigated the feasibility of two existing vacant buildings in downtown that were not acceptable again, so we chose the Whitman Street parking lot. After a cost analysis, it is the best fit, both from a qualitative and a quantitative standpoint, for the city to relocate our administration building to the Whitman Building. It will enhance customer service, both residents, business owners, it will have an improved windows for privacy, for utility billing, income tax. Those same customers will also have the ability for a drop box in the parking lot to make after-hour payments without leaving their vehicle, therefore, it will help service those that, with handicapped and disabilities, because the building will be ADA compliant. In addition, planning and zoning will be located adjacent to utility billing and income tax division on the first floor of the new facility, which will be right next to zoning, water and sewer. And city council chambers will be enlarged slightly to handle overcapacity crowds and large attendants, which is what we had tonight. So the project that we're voting for tonight, I'm voting yes, because I believe it will bring Xenia forward into the future. It's not an easy vote, and it's not one that I think anybody on council is taking lightly. I think it's okay that not everybody agrees, and I think that's why there's seven council members on this council. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, please?
Sorry, Mr. Vice President. I'm not going to reiterate, there's many pros and cons to this, and I've never made a business decision of this magnitude that didn't come with many pros and cons. I don't make this decision lightly or easily, but I do make it proudly. If it's a new courthouse, a new school, as Councilman Smith talked about, a police department, fire department, or city hall, I guarantee, no matter what that project is, no matter how much it costs, that elected officials from two-hundred-something years have sat around these tables and had these same debates. But every once in a while, generations got to step up, and this is, it takes care of some immediate needs with our courts and our police department, administration departments. It also allows us to grow. This idea of the Whitman Lot actually, I don't know if I remember right, it actually started, it came from some of the brainstorming and input we got during that open period where we were accepting ideas. I was approached first by a downtown developer who offered this as an alternative. I'm not going to mention my name, he's usually here, but he's not here tonight. So I don't make this lightly. You can ask my wife, her and I have talked quite a deal, quite a bit about this over the last three years. And I met with the police chief a couple of weeks ago, and they've been working on it for well over eight or nine. Clearback, look, for Mike, remember, they were talking, they were looking at other buildings back when the old Krogers became available, they're on date in Xenia, so this takes care of all their needs and our future, but it's very expensive. And building buildings, just like our new schools, is an expensive endeavor these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that after one of our meetings one time, someone that was in the audience came up and said, I've worked at the city for years and retired from the city, and I remember when we were building our second water sewer treatment plant, and the comments were exactly the same, we can't move forward, we can't afford it, you know, we don't know what the future's going to hold, and this person says, and it's repeating itself. So I only pray and hope that we have the success that we've had in the past. Xenia has a bright future, we've got great schools, we've got businesses that's contacting us, we're moving forward. As a council, we want to see the city move forward as a whole. Not one of us sitting here has not taken this lightly, not one of us sitting here doesn't care about our community. Each of us are active in our community, we're not just walking the walk and not doing the, you know, talking the talk and not walking it. We are active and we do care. There are seven of us, and we do have different opinions. Not once have I tried to get a council member to agree with me or talk them into it, I appreciate their opinion. I don't want someone to agree with me because I can out-talk someone, that's not what I want. I want everyone to have their right to be able to say what they feel is right. And I will support this, I have supported this, and I can't really add much more to what Josh or Wes has said as far as facts and things of that nature, but I do want everyone to know that I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question, please? Mayor.
Thank you. Excuse me, I do certainly support this program, and we'll be voting yes. I do want our city manager, I do not understand, I've heard it a couple of times or more than that about it, eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar streetlight program, that's not my understanding of how that, how that comes about. Could you just explain that so it's clear?
In our recent budget discussions, as part of this fiscal year, we did outline the council concerns about the cash flow situation, as has been identified this evening. We, with budget recommendations for this year, accompanied that with some recommendations on how to address those cash flow issues. Among those was a recommendation to look at, by statute in the state of Ohio, municipalities do have the ability to assess assessments for a whole host of services and infrastructure needs. Among those, after analysis of potential revenue options, we've identified, really years ago, that assessment for streetlights, which were a community good and a community service, which cost the city about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, would be an option to leverage some additional revenue with fairly minimal impact on a per household basis. So what we have recommended to council that as a potential measure to help mitigate some of the issues in terms of the cash flow situation, the council could institute that assessment, which would generate about two hundred, two hundred, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars on an annual basis. And I think the, I don't know what we estimated in terms of the average household impact was about twenty dollars, somewhere in that range. I don't know which way we go.
A year?
Per year.
Per year.
Okay. And then, again, the project, I know we talk about, you hear about eleven or twelve million dollar project, and that's over a twenty-five-year period, so it's not, the project is not costing that right up front. So with that, I would like to call for the question.
I have nothing more to add, in addition to what my colleagues have said, in speaking in favor of this, I have been in favor of the city moving forward for some time. I will pass my turn and entertain the mayor's motion. Call for the question, please. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowb.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
No.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And now, please, a vote on the motion at hand. Roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowb.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
No.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Handling all three of those, are you handling all three of those as one, as the three motions?
That was the recommendation, was a collective emergency motion that was moved and seconded.
All right. Next then, this evening, staff is recommending introduction of an ordinance to amend Xenia Quotative Ordinance, Chapter two oh eight, contracts and purchasing to authorize the city of Xenia to participate in the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Program, and to authorize the purchase of a standby generator for the administrative building, the new administrative building facility via the NJPA, and to authorize execution of the purchase order to Ohio Cat in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, try that again, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars per the quote attached to the general report. As indicated in the general report, this is probably a step that's not absolutely required, but in keeping with past practice, we felt appropriate to go ahead and add this to the code.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the ordinance, please?
Introduce.
Introduced by the Vice President. Thank you very much.
Last scheduled item this evening, and, sorry?
We have a point of order, I think we have one more item. We have a vote on the actual approval of the general.
There's two action items.
And may I have a motion, please, to authorize the purchase of the standby generator? So moved, Mr. President. Moved by Councilman Smith, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on that motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowb.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
No.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And now, the last scheduled item, staff is recommending council waive the second reading of an ordinance at two consecutive meetings, and approve as an emergency an action to sell the city-owned parcel commonly known as the former Kmart property in the amount of one dollar and other considerations.
This time, we need to recuse ourselves.
Madam Recorder, if you would please note for the record that Councilman Lauterback and I are recusing ourselves and leaving the room.
Again, staff is recommending council waive the second reading of an ordinance at two consecutive meetings and approve as an emergency an action to sell the city-owned parcel commonly known as the former Kmart property in the amount of one dollar and other considerations, and authorize the execution of the purchase agreement with Genesis Development Partners, LLC for the sale of the land. As has been widely reported, the city has been in negotiations with Genesis Development Partners for many months, working to construct a deal that would usher in major redevelopment of the vacated and increasingly blighted former retail facility on Main Street. After significant staff efforts and collaboration with Genesis, we are pleased to bring this action to city council this evening. This is the first of several critical steps required to initiate the redevelopment of the site, and because of the potentially extended timeline required to fully execute all of these necessary steps, staff is recommending this action be taken as an emergency to expedite the process. It should be pointed out that this transaction does not sell the Kmart building itself, but rather the ground underneath. The building and the land lease with the city is owned by a separate private firm with which Genesis has also negotiated a transaction. It should also be pointed out that the approval of the purchase agreement will not necessarily result in the immediate work at the site due to other steps still requiring executive execution separately. This is an important first domino in what is to be a series of steps that will be undertaken over the coming months. I do also want to acknowledge a number of staff members, Steve Brodsky, Brian Forchman, Chris Berger, Mr. Basil Lack, have been very instrumental in helping to negotiate this deal. Been a long time in coming, and again, it doesn't get the entire project done, but we're very excited we presented the council's意见.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency to sell the property for a dollar?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the vice president. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman.
I just noticed that we had a meeting on Tuesday. Could you explain why there's some changes made to this contract? Are we allowed to discuss that?
Yeah, I think we're comfortable with that. And if there are any specific questions, we do have a legal council president that assisted with the completion of the final draft of the contract. We did provide to council today an updated version, have available tonight if anyone so wishes to access it, an updated version of the contract. The version that we discussed Tuesday night in executive session, if you recall, I mentioned that we had to deliver that back to the developer. We had some additional back and forth, literally at 5:30 last night. We were still working on some final details, so we provided for you today the final version. So I did want to make sure that the version that we gave to you tonight highlighted some of those changes, just to be, you know, upfront and honest about any of the conditions. There were no significant changes in terms of conditions, it was clarification on a number of items. There was one point that we were negotiating on quite a bit that seemed to, I think we've got worked out, that resulted in no, you know, major change. So again, that's the reason for the, you know, for the late addition, and if you have any questions on a specific change, we can certainly answer them.
Any other discussion or question, please? Mr. Vice President.
Just some statements. I know some people that talked to me about why we're selling the land so cheap. Genesis is not buying this land cheaply by any means. They are having to pay for the building, and they have to buy out the lease, and they're paying probably a little bit more than just regular real estate goes for in Xenia to make that happen, so. But I do want to make people aware that this is, like the city manager, this is one step. There's millions of private and public dollars going in this project, and one of those steps is some tax increment financing deals that have to be worked out between, between these parties, the city, and even the school system has to get involved to make sure that we can position the tax revenues as such that everyone can benefit from it. But all in all, I'm going to support this, to sell this real estate and get this land back into private hands, and hope that they can make some money out of it, and overall, Xenia will benefit greatly from it.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? I would congratulate city staff on this. This has been a long and arduous process with the complexities of negotiation and such, and the difficulties, as the vice president just alluded to, in creating a, an economic environment where our businesses that have expressed interest in Xenia can come in somewhat to very confidently and make those millions of dollars in investments. It will benefit us long-term, it will certainly advance the quality of life for our citizens, and will advance the overall aesthetics of our city greatly. And I am thankful to every member on this council for their work on this particular aspect. It has truly been a collective venture. We have not always agreed at various points along the way, but all of us are unified, as I believe my colleagues would support, that this is an absolutely necessary and mandatory step for us to take in turning that corner in Xenia to a more productive and enjoyable community to live in. So if there are no other questions, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
With that, I just want a couple of additional items tonight, but before I address those, just want to, just want to state, you know, I know, you know, given the discussion among council tonight, there isn't unanimity on all the projects, all the issues tonight, all the projects that are underway, but I think there's one undeniable fact that has really been demonstrated tonight. There is a renaissance occurring in this community. We have talked just this evening about these new city facilities, about redevelopment of Town Square, about a new turf project at the schools, and the new elementary schools that our students are enjoying. Just this week alone, I have engaged in discussions with the Y and other partners looking at a new recreation facility. We're talking with interested parties about the potential to renovate the Carnegie Library. Athletes in Action is looking at a major, major enhancement to their operation, and there are numerous other things that I can't really get into. A lot of the institutions that exist in this community and facilities and infrastructure are aged and outdated, and it is a really exciting though challenging time for our community. And so again, I think it's, it's really, we're on the precipice of a renaissance in the community, and I'm excited about where things are headed and where they're headed. Two additional items before I yield. One, I will provide for council here, a letter that I got, copies of the letter I got today, I believe, from several members of the county court system. I don't think we need to engage in discussion tonight unless it's council's pleasure, but they have raised some questions or concerns relative to the discussion on the bike trail redevelopment project in the downtown. Read through a few questions about anything of the issues that they raise, myself, the city planner, could be contacted separately. They make some assertions that I think are not necessarily accurate, but I can tell you one of the things that I do want to do and have instructed staff to start to look at is to address the utilization of the parking in the areas that they're talking about. You know, as we talked about previously, the potential this project is to have some impacts on the parking downtown and the traffic flow, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing with this project and providing options for councils. So again, I wanted to provide that to you. And then, second, I mentioned to the council president before the meeting tonight, I attended the meeting earlier this week with the county administrator and administrative leadership from the city of Bieber Creek, Bieber Creek Township. We've got some information to update council on regarding the US-35 project and necessary political, financial support that's being requested of the potential partners. So I need to get a discussion set with council and some feedback and direction from council on how you'd like to proceed, and really need that by the end of the month here. So it's potential we could maybe do a work session before the last meeting this month, or there's an opportunity for another meeting between now and then, and that's council's pleasure, certainly that, but I just wanted to put out there that issue is an important topic and one that does have a time urgency going into May, as the grant deadlines for the county to submit grants is coming up in early May.
Thank you. Please, council members, send me your availability through next week, the following week, and up to a special session prior to the next council meeting. Please copy the city manager on that, so that we can pick a, an optimal date for all of us to engage in this conversation. Is this probably an hour, two-hour conversation?
I think it's probably an hour discussion.
Hour discussion. Thank you.
And just one final item. Last night, we did conduct with the assistance of public safety forces and the fireworks contractor, the demo for the fireworks, which are scheduled for July 3rd. We're very, very excited about this. The demo last night was necessary for us to determine how we can safely have the fireworks show and how to zone out the area for the protective zone that has to be established. We were asked by the contractor not to put a lot of pre-notice out there, because they didn't want a crowd down at the park, because we didn't have all of the safety perimeters established. So we did get some questions today as to why we didn't put more information out there sooner, that is why. What I can tell you that we did do, we, within a 1,300-foot radius of that entire area, we did send a hyperreach call yesterday, late afternoon, early evening. We put information on Facebook and on the website. I talked to the resident today who had some concerns, he didn't get the hyperreach call, and so this is the first time we've dealt with this kind of thing in a long time, so we're kind of learning as we go, and I think as we get upon the July 3rd date, we'll send out maybe two hyperreach calls to warn people. But we're very excited, we're very pleased with the results of the demo last night. It occurred a little later than we thought because of the rain that blew through, but we're looking at probably a 15-to-20-minute show, probably 1,500 shells, and I want to reiterate that that entire production is being done through the generosity of Xenia Rotary and a number of individuals and businesses around the community that have stepped up and donated. There'll be a park full of free to the public activities and entertainment. Very, very excited about this event to celebrate a patriotic holiday and to really bring the community together. So again, that'll be done in conjunction on July 3rd with the First Fridays, start downtown, park downtown, take part in those activities, migrate down to the park for all the activities down there, and we'll culminate the night with the fireworks show. And again, we're taking a lot of extra precautions because we don't want to burn the middle school down there. So again, thanks for everybody out there for the patience last night.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the city manager, please? Councilman.
I just want to commend you. I think this is a great idea. I don't know when the last time the city of Xenia's had fireworks.
We talked, we thought it had been about 25 years, I think.
Yeah, I think one time they had them at the fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds was the last time, yeah, according to what we learned.
So I commend you for this project. Thank you. They were, they looked great. It was loud, I watched them from my porch.
Well, we were a little concerned about the, with, you know, the visibility in the park itself with the foliage, but we learned last night that they will be shot off high enough with the detonation point that I think, even from downtown beyond, I think you'll be able to see it, so we're very excited about it.
So what I hear you saying is, as when you come down and enjoy the movie Lego at the park on this particular night, we will take an intermission and you just sit back and watch the fireworks, and then we will reconsume the movie.
Absolutely.
There we go.
Many activities going on.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $295,338.09.
Have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
One reminder to citizens and residents that the city income tax filing deadline is next Wednesday, April 15th. Our office is open to assist taxpayers in filing their city income tax returns. The office will be open at 9:00 to 5:00 tomorrow, Friday, and the same Monday and Tuesday, and some additional hours on Wednesday from 8:00 to 6:00. So lines are starting to get long, so the sooner you can come in, the better.
Thank you very much. Anything for our finance director this evening, please? Mr. Vice President.
I just want to really, it's a thank you to him, not a comment, not a question, but we, I sent the email out earlier this week about the request we got to participate in the state treasurer's online checkbook program, and our finance director is looking into that and how we can participate one way or the other, but what we voted on tonight was basically our.
Right, and I believe in the, I think the one thing I, you know, did talk to, did get the notification from the state, you know, whether it's through the state program or, we've talked before about putting some of those things on our website. One thing, believing in the transparency greatly, one thing I want to make sure of, if everybody's looked at the schedule of bills, sometimes even those of us that have looked at those types of items, sometimes the explanation, if you don't have some background in terms of whether it's the water fund or the sewer fund or some of those things, it can get a little confusing.
The $240 cherry bomb?
Right, so I want, so I want to make sure that the format that we can give that data to the state or that we put it on our website is understandable enough so that when the citizens are looking at that information, they can see pretty clearly, okay, I know what that is. Obviously, there'll be some things that will still, you know, garner questions, but, you know, we'll try and work to get that, get that done.
That was the third shell that went up last night. I just saw that. I don't know what to say about it.
Let me ask, could you check into when you pay your bill online? If you, can you do a recurring payment and not have to put your information in every time?
Yeah, we can check, I believe you can. We can talk to you. Depends on how you're handling, if you're talking about your utility bill. Yeah, there are ways to do it. I will have the council management get with you.
Okay, thank you.
She can talk to you about that.
Anything else for our city finance director, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items this evening, all second readings. First is the ordinance zoning existing 4.9 acre parcel with Greene County parcel identification number. We'll go into that, from R3 multifamily residential to CPUD commercial planned unit development, originally used by Vice President Long.
So moved. Move for passage, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cow. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Councilman.
Thank you very much. I know this, this project has generated some negative thoughts by the residents that live around this property. This property is currently zoned, multifamily residential. David Martin is the one that wants to change this develop, or change this zoning. He wants to put some store-in lock property in that property. Those of you that don't know Mr. Martin, he does everything first class. I mean, no one would ever argue that he does anything on the cheap. I think the residents around there need to consider, with the current zoning, what could end up on that lot? And it could be multifamily that would generate much more traffic, much more noise, much more issues. And with the rezoning, the project that he has planned, I have no doubt that it'll be attractive. It will not generate as much noise and traffic as a multifamily residential unit would, so therefore, I'm in favor of it. And, you know, I had a, I had a multifamily unit that was going to go in my neighborhood, and I was vocal against it, you know, and thought the worst, you know, and that project has never affected my life whatsoever. So I think maybe if the residents just, just sit back and wait, let Mr. Martin put his development in there, and I think you'll probably find out, it's probably a better alternative than the multifamily residential unit. So I am in support of the project. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, please? Councilman.
I'm going to be voting no. I, I met with the residents, as I do on any vote, I hear both sides of the story. Again, I met with the residents, and it's, you've got the old saying, "Don't build it in my backyard." I went out there and I looked, and it, but that, to me, that property is not marketable for a multifamily unit, or we'd have sold a long time ago. But to have storage units looking out some of these attractive houses, looking out your windows, again, I met with the neighbors, and I have to side with them, and like I said at the last meeting, anything Mr. Martin does will be done in quality, but I have to take the neighbors' considerations to heart, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Mr. Vice President.
I want to thank him for his time. I've got privilege, I hear this three or four times, the planning and zoning, and he's worked very well with Brian and the city staff in presenting something that he, he can make some money and market that property, and so I want to appreciate that. I too met with some of the condos behind there. Matter of fact, their homeowners association came to our last planning and zoning meeting to speak in favor of this. I also spoke with some parents in the, one of the apartment buildings close to this property who's looking forward for them not having that nuisance of a woods that attracts kids there after school, and, and I'm sure he's tired of probably picking the trash up from their, their activity on that property, too. I will be voting in favor of this. He's been working on this for a long time. If he could find another use for this, he would have done it within the last 10 or 12 years he's been trying to sell this property. to sell this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? I, for myself, have significant reservation about voting yes for this particular item for the principal reason that it does not go along with our exp, for the utilization of space within the city. That said, however, I am also loathe to go against the recommendation of one of our citizen-led groups, which has brought together a very considered approach for approving this. And as such, in balance of those considerations, I will be voting yes. If there are no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
No.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have an ordinance submitting chapter 226, Community Funding Title IV Legislation, Part II Administrative Code. The codified ordinances of City of Xenia, originally introduced by Vice President Long.
Move for passage. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a lease for 3.84 total acres of land below Delbrook, originally used by Councilman Kow.
Move by Councilman. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further this evening?
Anything for our law director this evening, please? Seeing none. Any updates or changes to our summary of action items, Mr. City Manager?
Couple of brief updates. Our next economic development quarterly update will be at our next meeting. Have a meeting tomorrow with superintendent. Among the items is the setting up a program for, it's not just a program to do the pledge, but we're doing a citizen program with it. And then finally, I should have at the next meeting on the 23rd, the MOU with Bridges of Hope.
Thank you very much. For my colleagues, any additions or changes to the summary of action items, please?
I just was able to talk to one of the reps on the Bridges of Hope project, and they had a real positive update. Just learned about it today, so that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you very much. Seeing nothing further, reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Lauterback, please.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things, just to remind everyone that this Saturday evening, April 11th, is Xenia High School prom. So, if those students are watching tonight, be safe. Don't drink and drive. Don't text and drive. I was able to attend the mock crash at Xenia High School. The weather really didn't cooperate today. It was canceled from Tuesday, moved to today with the threat of storms. It was actually inside, so the kids did not really get to see the performance of care flight coming in and the significance of how important it is. They did have a really good presentation, though, inside in the auditorium. And I believe our chaplain that prayed today before our meeting was actually one of the speakers today at that event. And it was about an hour and a half, and I did hear some of the comments from the kids when they walked in or was walking out of the auditorium, and that was pretty intense. And, you know, if anything, for adults, the message of "don't text and drive" is extremely important. I know we're all busy. It's a habit to want to look at your phone when you hear a message coming in, but, you know, it can wait. And I believe the statistic, I might be wrong, but 30, over 36% of most vehicle crashes involve alcohol, but even a higher percentage involve texting or distracted driving. So, just keep that in mind. And then, besides prom, I, oh, One Bistro. I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, because I saw the mayor today at One Bistro, and I think, Councilman Engel, you were there after that. And this was my second time to eat, and we bought it to go, four meals. It's delicious. It's really good. And you can text your order ahead of time, and they were busy, though. So, they're struggling a little bit with, because they're overwhelmed a little bit. But it's a phenomenal program, and I look forward to them coming into the Xenia market. And then I had Ha Ha Pizza for the second time, too, last week. So, congratulate them for moving into Xenia. So, I do feel there's an upbeat in the community. The weather's breaking. It's really nice. It's glad, I'm glad to see that we're getting some sun. And, you know, the, we do hear a lot of comments about the road conditions and how poor roads are. And they're poor, not just in Xenia, but everywhere in Ohio and Michigan, too. And, you know, you travel 235, it's, it's really bad there at Hilltop. So, it's just not our community. We've had two really bad winters, a lot of freezing, a lot of thawing, and that's just brutal. And I don't know if they're not putting enough adhesive in the asphalt, or if that's an EPA change from years ago. It just doesn't seem like roads do hold up as good as they used to. But I'm glad we're able to address some of the streets that we can due to what we promised the citizens with the tax quarter percent in 2011. So, and that's all I have for tonight. I appreciate everybody watching and the large attendance that we have tonight in the council chambers. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilman Kow?
Thank you very much. Earlier tonight, we had a presentation from the schools on the new football field, so I'll piggyback that into Xenia Wee Bucks. Football and cheer registration begins this week on Friday, April 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McKinley School. There'll be one next week, April 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Cox Elementary. We are only having five registrations. The last one will be May 8th. So, if you have a player, first grade to sixth grade, going into first grade next year through sixth grade next year, get out and get registered. There will be no late registrations after May 8th. So, that's the one thing to remember is absolutely no late registration. Pass the word to all your friends. We're definitely looking for more cheerleaders in our program. We took that back in-house two years ago, and we're trying to build the cheer program. So, definitely looking for young girls that want to participate in sideline cheer. It's $120 per child. We do have payment plans that they can participate in or pay through credit card or debit card. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Mills?
Thank you. I'd like to apologize for missing the March 26th meeting. I had an unplanned experience, and I'm just glad to be back tonight. So, I apologize for not being here and not letting anyone know. I just was a no-show, and that's not my character. I also would like to mention that the weather is turning nicer, which enhances, brings out the children. So, please be aware as you're driving through our community, and watch out because those kids are going to be darting and running, and they're excited to be outside as much as we're excited to be outside. I want to encourage you to support your community. I mean, no one else cares more about your community than you do. Go out there, support your community, and more importantly, support each other. If you're able to help, help someone out, do that, because, you know, those things are priceless. There's no amount of money that can ever take away the need for people to be kind. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Thank you. Just a few of my activities. I was asked to bring greetings at Will Force University's Alumni Honorary Luncheon. It was an excellent luncheon and got a chance to meet people from out of state. And one person on one side of me knew family from that state, and another person on the other side from Michigan knew my family from Michigan. So, I had a great time. I also attended the Miami Valley Military Association's Get Acquainted Reception at Hope Hotel, and that is always very exciting, and you get to meet a lot of people and just do a lot of exchanging and conversation. So, that was great. And Central State had their Honors Day convocation, and I did not list the name of the young man from Xenia. I was so proud of him. He got a gold cord and a lot of other honors, but I will bring his name up at our next meeting. Just real proud of him and what he has done. Along with that, I attended a meeting at Central State for their Seed to Bloom program. It was new last year, and they're going to continue it and enhance it this year, but it's a great program involving sixth and seventh graders and getting them on campus. And they not only learn about planting seeds, but it's much more than that about the soil and the composition of the soil and very detailed and scientific information. So, that will be again this year. And then finally, this evening, I did attend Business After Hours at the Xenia Business Center, and I think I mentioned that at the last meeting where I had a meeting with United Way. So, they're housed there, and now the cats will be housed there as well. And it's a very, very nice center, and he said there's still some space if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. Two items. One is a statistic I heard this week kind of set me off, that the, the average homeless age for a person in the U.S. is nine years old. That is the average of a homeless person living in the U.S. And I say that because we've kind of got a bad rap here lately about Xenia being anti-poor, but there's many organizations like Exalt Hunger and Jeremiah Training and Community Action Partnerships, and the Dale's involved on their board, that are, that you can donate to or help with to raise, might have helped that situation. And I want to bring light to one of those, which is Interfaith Hospitality Network, which is one, a family shelter here downtown. They are having a 5K walk-in run coming up in June, and that register, the registration is going on now. So, if you want to take part in that, go visit their website at the Interfaith Hospitality Network and sign up to help to combat some of the homeless situations in our community specifically. They do take in families, and I volunteered there, and it's sad to see kids that are two and three years old homeless and that they're calling the shelter home. And the other item, not to be Debbie down on, I did have the unfortunate situation to have to call 911 this weekend for my daughter, and she's fine. She's in an accident. But I do want just to recognize the, I didn't get her name. I'm trying to get it from our police chief, the dispatcher, who had a very panicked father on the phone for five minutes as my daughter laid unconscious there on the ground. And she worked with me to get her awake. And the Township Fire Department was amazing how fast they got there, within four minutes, down in the woods, and got my daughter out of her mental children's. And she's home in a weight, with a few cracked ribs and a broken nose, but she's learned her lesson that she's not old enough to jump on a go-kart and go it alone. She decided to be a daredevil with no parents around and take off. So, I just want to thank that dispatcher personally, and I'll find out what her name is. And I've already thanked the, like, seven or eight township firefighters that showed up. They come with both medics. Appreciate their help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of items this evening echoing on to earlier comments about the Easter egg hunt. That was a spectacular event. Braca has done an exceptional job of bringing that event together for the community's children and the surrounding community's children the last several years that I and my wife have been involved with it, along with a number of council members. And kudos to Jeanne Mills, Sarah Mays, my other colleagues that were there. It was truly gratifying to see a number of children who might not have a great deal of Easter, other than that, to happily scoop up eggs and then come running forward looking for their basket when their number was called. It was just a great event. Could have been slightly warmer, but beyond our control. Also tagging on to a comment from Councilman Smith about One Bistro, just as a reminder to the audience that still with us, listening and present, One Bistro is not just another restaurant that's here. They are a ministry. One Bistro is all about turning their revenues into useful donations to worthy causes. I had an opportunity to sit and chat with the head chef and the lady behind the counter, who I think is the overall manager of the activity. Great people with a true heart for helping people in need. I highly, highly encourage you, as you have time on Thursdays, go visit them. They will tell you after an exquisite meal, one that you would be hard to match anywhere in many of our finer restaurants, they will ask you for a suggested donation for that. And there's no twisting of arms. I was happy to give them a few extra dollars because at any restaurant, I've spent far more than what they were asking for the meal that my wife and I gave, or my wife and I received from them. And they were happy to discuss with my wife that Exalt Hunger program. They are very interested in coming into partnership with us on that.
And I was sharing with my colleagues here, right now, there's 260 children that receive a meal, a take-home bag every week here in the Xenia community school system. So-
And they have familiarity with a community that does about three-plus times that amount. So, I think they will be able to bring us some excellent working-level knowledge of how to do more, because 260 only scratches that initial-
We have not even touched the high school.
So, I am, I am truly grateful that they have landed here, as well as any other number of new businesses. But this particular business is near and dear to my heart because they're more than just a profit-making enterprise. They are looking to do things for our community in a, in a big way. And finally, just a, more of an administrative comment was brought up about our, our legal costs and app architecture costs that was asked as a, as a summary of action item from our previous meeting. I would certainly acknowledge that our external legal costs this year have been, have been large. But in deference to our law director, he is a one-armed paper hanger and doing an exceptional job with the prosecutions in the city. I commend him for that. We were, as you could see, as our city manager said, we have had any number of really complex projects going on. We have had to seek additional support where needed to get that done, and I am fully supportive of our city staff and law department that we have done the right thing to ensure that all of our progress going forward is compliant with the letter of the law and putting the city in the best possible position. In regards to app architects, that's certainly a large number, but putting together a project such as this eight-plus million-dollar, eventually growing to 12 over 25-year city project required some truly professional engineering-level support and something that this council had, had supported and endorsed spending in the past. With that, I have no other comments and would seek a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.